Looks like we got quite a few folks here for good reasons, obviously, and we're excited that you're joining us tonight. First off, I'd like to acknowledge that we do have one of our youth council with us here tonight, which is Isabel Taylor. Isabel, do you want to say anything first before we get going as far as your role at our youth council or anything like that? If so, speak into the mic.
In youth council, we mainly just volunteer and help our community and give youth a voice in our community. And it's very, well, it's very nice to see all the people in Leighton.
Well, thank you very much. And they're very instrumental in helping out on a lot of different things, as well as good training for any type of future positions here upon the diocese. So, thank you. Okay. As customary, we like to start all of our meetings out with a prayer and a pledge, and we take turns up here. And I believe tonight is my turn. So with that, I'll go ahead and start with the invocation, and then we'll do the prayer. Pledge, I mean, sorry, yeah, thank you for the correction. Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be able to gather here tonight as the governing body of the great city of Leighton. We're grateful for all the folks who put in the many time, energy to continue to keep this city flowing the way it does and functioning properly. We're certainly grateful for all those who work around the clock, primarily the first responders, and being able to take care of the citizens at any moment's time as needed. We recognize at this time of year that there's been many fires, and we pray that thou will bless those folks that are dealing with them, and that they'll be able to, be able to hopefully retain their homes and not have to be evacuated anymore. We thank thee again for the abundance that we have as far as living here in this great nation as well, and the freedom and choices that we have to voice our opinions and to be able to govern ourselves. And we pray that all of us will use good judgment in everything we do each day, and be kind to one another, and help those in need. And we say these things dearly in thy name, Jesus Christ, amen. Okay, if you would, please stand. Make sure you don't want to start. Okay, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Council, we have two sets of minutes here that we need to adopt. If no one has any corrections to them, I'd look for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the Leighton City Council Budget Work Meeting, March 25th, 2025, and the Leighton City Council Special Meeting, April 10th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we adopt the minutes as written and stated. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to our municipal announcements. So anyone, any council that's involved with other committees or special interests within the city, I'd appreciate you kind of sharing your information with all those that are here in attendance, as well as those online.
Mayor, every Friday evening, we have Leighton Fest here at the, at the park. Great event, a lot of people show up, a lot of food trucks, activities, entertainment. This week is in conjunction with, well, every week, there's a movie Friday evening as well, thanks to the help with Davis Arts Council. This week, Davis Arts Council will be partnering with Leighton Heritage Museum. The movie being shown is Harold and the Purple Crayon. And starting an hour before the film starts at 6:00 PM in the museum, there will be lots of activities, bring the family themed around the movie Harold and the Purple Crayon. And then at 7 o'clock, make your way into the amphitheater and enjoy the movie as a family. It's always a fun event. But Leighton Fest happens every Friday evening, 7:00 PM to, or sorry, 5:30. My eyes are older than I thought. 5:30 to, and to 9:00 PM in the, with the movie at 7:00. In addition to that, we'll have more information coming up, but at September 12th, one of the, the more popular family recreation events, the Park After Dark will be happening. So keep that on your mind. About a month away, we'll, as I said, we'll have more information coming up in the next couple of meetings. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We appreciate your representation for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So, the Leighton Communities That Care, that is a community coalition that is made up of community members, parents, elected officials, and pretty much anybody in the city who cares about suicide and drug and alcohol prevention in our young people. And so our coalition, we've got a number of activities that we participate in, and a couple I want to highlight coming up in September. On September 15th, at Northridge High School, the Ridge City Community Schools Family Night, we will be there, CTC will be there, and that's a community event that's open to the public. It'll be from 5:30 to 7:00, and the public is welcome to come. And then also, September 24th, I know we'll have lots more about this later, but that's the Fire Department's Open House. And so CTC will have a booth there, and that open house will be from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Firehouse, I think it's Station 54. And then one other thing I want to give shout out to, coming up in October, is our Prevention Week, and that will be October 6th through the 8th. There are a series of events that are taking place that are free to the public. So keep your eyes peeled for that. I'll be providing information, and you can also find this on our Facebook page, Leighton Communities That Care, or you can go to Davis Behavioral Health website, because we partner with them to put on this program. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Is there any others? Okay, one other thing I'd like to mention also, speaking in September, 9/11, our Day of Service, that's when everyone in the community comes out and really kind of helps beautify and take care of a lot of different things, projects that we've identified that, so if anyone would like to participate in that, it's, like I said, it's citywide, go on to Just Serve, and there'll be a list of all the different projects, and you'll be able to find some that are maybe closer to your home, or if you want to help out in any other area. It's a great time to kind of just bond with your friends and neighbors and meet new folks. So, anyway, that will take place on 9/11. Okay, if there's no other municipal announcements, we'll go on down to our verbal petition and presentations. And like I said in the past, this is kind of the fun part of our meeting. We, it doesn't happen very often, but when it does, we certainly love it here as a council, myself, to be able to acknowledge folks for, usually for folks that have really kind of either one gone on beyond the call of duty, or has given many years of service here. So with that, I think we'll start out with the first item, which is a recognition of the community members for a fire prevention effort. And we've got our, I just, I just, our Fire Marshal, I was going to say Doug Bitten, that's going to actually present this item. So, Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to just acknowledge that the absence of Detective Cody Bowman, who's going to stand with me, appreciate your prayer, Mayor, on the prayers for the fires out in our communities, because that's where he's at right now. He's actually going up to the UNIS, where their family has a cabin, trying to get things out of their cabin before this fire that's evolving up there gets the cabin. So, our prayers are with him and his family. So, thank you very much. I'd just like to, Mayor Petro and council members, be able to extend my sincere gratitude for allowing me the time this evening under a full's agenda to formally recognize four exceptional members of our community who rendered critical assistance to a Leighton City Fire Department incident that happened on June 20th, 2025, at approximately 4:00 PM, near the Case Creek Trail Crossing. You'll see a video that's kind of relooping here, and the progression of the smoke plume that's occurring. On that day, there was a red flag warning. That means it's very dry, very dangerous. Many of our days so far have been in the red flag warning here recently. It had been issued by the National Weather Service prompting strong winds and critical dry environment conditions that significantly heightened the risk of wildfire. The Case Creek Trail, celebrated for its scenic values and location adjacent to neighbors and neighborhoods along the bridge lines, remains particularly susceptible under such circumstances. Unfortunately, these conditions culminated in an incident where a firework was ignited by two juveniles and sparked a swiftly advanced vegetation fire at the public access point off of Kingview Drive. Surrounded by residents and properties in both on the eastern and western boundaries, the area is acutely at risk. The fire advanced rapidly, resulting in property damage including destruction of vital fences, and posed immediate threat to nearby homes. Miss Jaden Critchley was hiking on the area trail at the time, observed the two miners fleeing on e-bikes, and quickly recognized the severity of the growing fire. Demonstrating remarkable composure, she contacted 911 to report the incident, immediately enlisted the assistance of nearby individuals, Mr. Aiden Jones and Mr. Zachary Newbold. These young men promptly began to alerting residents along Kingview Drive, ensuring that the homeowners would be aware of it and take appropriate actions for safety precautions. According to one impacted resident, Mrs. Cynthia Benson, home security footage captures Mr. Jones and Mr. Newbold actively attempting to warn those on inside. Ms. Critchley continued her support after the incident by providing a detailed witness statement, including accurate description of the suspects and their actions. Their prompt and decisive, decisive actions were instrumental in protecting life and property. We commend Ms. Critchley, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Newbold for their bravery, presence of mind, and sense of civic duty. In addition, I wish to recognize Mr. Chris Crowder, Leighton Christian Academy, sorry, Leighton Christian Life Center, for his vital contributions to the investigation to the suit afterwards. Upon request by myself, Mr. Crowder, though out of town at the time, immediately committed to reviewing the church's security footage over the weekend, and successfully retrieved and delivered high-quality video and images that were pivotal in identifying two suspects. Later in that advancing week, our Inspector Quinn Pfeifer was able to use the footage that he remembered by muscle memory and saw these miners traveling on Fairfield Road. Working in coordination, Inspector Pfeifer and Fire Marshal Bitten stopped the individuals with the involvement of law enforcement, and the miners' parents obtained confessions, and one who admitted to lighting the fire that caused the blaze. We again are deeply appreciative for Mr. Crowder's technical support, response, responsiveness, and collaborative spirit in helping bring the matter to a swift and just resolution. This evening, in these privilege, it is my privilege and honor to for, for the efforts of these four individuals exemplified community's leadership, courage, service. On behalf of the Leighton City Fire Department, and the Fire Department members know that we have these challenge coins, and these are respectfully given to those that help us and greatly collaborate with us. And so I'd like to have Jaden Critchley, Aiden Jones, Zachary Newbold, if he's here, I don't know if he's going to be here or not, and Mr. Chris Crowder, along with Assistant Fire Chief Scott Mon, and probably Battalion Chief Beach to come on up and give an appreciation handshake, along with our council members and the mayor, if that's appropriate, to stand and shake you guys a hand. Aiden?
Thank you very much.
Aiden, Aiden's down.
I made it down.
Okay.
I'm gonna say you so much.
in our, in our city like this. And I just have to say thank you personally, and I know the rest of the council's going to want to make a comment as well, but I have to say that this hit home for me, because I actually was on the fire, I'm on the fire corps, and I responded to this call. And it was hard to see what was taking place, and, but yet at the same time, very rewarding to see how good our fire department works alongside with others, because this call went out for other agencies to step in and help. At the same time, it's an acknowledgement to all those residents who has participated in past 9/11 services. And the reason why I call that out is I actually participated when we cleaned that hillside of a lot of dead debris, and a lot of leaves, and just all kinds of stuff that would have just made this fire an infernal right away, and then we wouldn't have been able to be as responsive as we had. So with that, I think the acknowledgement with these fine folks here tonight, as long as everyone else that's willing to come out and help participate on those Days of Service, I mean, this, this is what it's about. You really helped mitigate a disaster that could have taken place. So, thank you again for your service, as long as with our, of course, our fire department. Council, do you have any comments that you'd like to add to? You're welcome to, you don't have to, but...
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you to the community. We've got fire professionals that this is their life, and, and it's, it's really, I, I, I don't know if I can speak for them, but I can imagine it's a lot more helpful when they have help, you know, and there's, there's a lot more eyes. And June 20th could have been a lot different, burned in a lot of people's memories if, if things didn't happen the way they did, so. So, thank you. It's what community's about. Thanks.
Good job.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was, my wife called me when this was going on. She's like, there's smoke over by the trail. And I had got on the police scanner app and listened to the, the back and forth between residents and the, and our, our firefighters, and they were calm, professional, had it under control. It was, it could have been, again, it could have been a lot worse. And I sent a note to Chief Ward, and he was grateful for the professionalism and how well-trained our, our staff is, and that's what they do. They're training all the time. And I appreciate that, and hopefully all of us in the community appreciate the fact that they are ready at a moment's notice. At the same time, those that helped with, with residents who were there on that trail, who were there for a reason, and to help advise and, and to help with making, making, you know, making us aware of, of what was happening that quickly. I've been always on that trail. If, if you're there now, you can see the remnants of the vinyl fence that's been melted and, and just homes. It, it, it just could have been a disaster, even, even worse than what it was. And so grateful for these residents that helped, and grateful for the professionalism and the training of our, of our firefighters. Truly great. Thank you. Just, just thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you again. And I think we, they, these four deserve another round of applause for all their efforts. Okay, we'll go ahead and continue on with our meeting. Next up would be our citizens' comment. This portion of the meeting is for folks to address the governing body. Oh, gosh, sorry. I can't read, obviously. We do have actually a bigger portion of this presentation tonight, which is service awards to a lot of folks here at the city that is, once again, as I mentioned earlier, has really done a lot, a lot of good service for us for many years. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Alex. And I apologize personally, I do, for overlooking that, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. It's a, this is a night of recognizing exceptional people. So, again, congratulations to the citizens who were involved and, and the employees. It's my privilege to recognize on behalf of the, the city administration and the city council and the mayor, some exceptional, exceptional employees that the city has that have given a, a great deal of years to their service. We have among typical traditional compensation approaches, which are very, very important. We also have a, a program where at five-year increments, we recognize, sometimes publicly, sometimes a little less publicly in their own staff meetings, the contributions of city employees all across the board. And if an employee's been with the city for 20 years or longer, we ask them, it's totally voluntary, but we ask them to come to a city council meeting and be recognized by the mayor and the council, and also by those who may be attending the meeting or, or watching it and streaming, and help. It's a way to recognize them and also to help the public understand what exceptional employees we have. I've had the privilege to be the city manager in the city for a few years, and I can say that the, the secret sauce of, of the success of this community are the employees of the city. It's, it's not the administration, and it's not always the city council, although they provide the direction of the mayor. Each part is integral, but it's really the, the men and women who day-to-day do their job, and do it with loyalty and fidelity and integrity. And so it's, to me personally, it's, it's really a blessing and a privilege to interact with them. So I'd like to recognize seven exceptional individuals this evening in various departments, and maybe I can acknowledge them all individually, all at one time, if that's okay, Mayor, then have you come up and go around and be able to be greeted by the, the council. One of the other things I'll say, ahead of time, usually I say it afterwards, but any man or woman can't be successful by themselves. It requires your peers at work, but it also requires the other people that you have as a support structure in your life. And in the, in the case of families is a primary in that. And regardless of what, what your family situation is, these employees, those that are important to your life, the people you love and that love you back and support you in your commitment to serving the city, we thank you as well, because we recognize that in many of these cases, you're, it's not just an eight-to-five job. It's, it's many hours and after-hours, and you come when you're called, and, and so on and so forth. So, I want to thank the families and loved ones of those who are being recognized as well. So, the first individual with 30 years of experience is Mr. Doug Pierce. Doug is our GIS administrator, and does just an exceptional job of the city this size, of taking care of all the GIS and mapping and digitizing that takes place. The second is Mr. Matthew Wright. Matt is the mechanic in the Parks and Recreation Department, has been with the city for 25 years, does an exceptional job as well. Almost all of our mechanical work is handled in-house, saving costs to the taxpayers. Just does a great job. The third is Mr. Sean Lewis. Sean completed a full career at Leighton PD as a police officer, and then retired for a bit or stepped away, and then has come back in the last several years to be our code enforcement supervisor, and him and his team do an exceptional job. Sean's had 30 years combined with the city. And then we have four individuals from the Public Works Department. The first is Mr. Doug O'Brien. Doug is the Public Works Inspector Supervisor, so he's heavily involved in his team in inspecting the work that's done by contractors and for public projects and private projects. And Doug is a wealth of knowledge, has vast experience in the private and public sector, and, and really is a great blessing to the city. Second is Mr. Eddie Resty. Eddie is our fleet supervisor, works at a shop. Eddie's been with the city for 25 years. Mr. Brian King is next. He's been with the city for also 25 years, and he's our wastewater lead worker in public works. And then last but not least, Mr. Joshua Steed. And Josh is one of the public works inspectors that works with Doug in, in overseeing and managing and, and making sure that the infrastructure that's being built, whether it be public or private, is up to code and up to standard. And Josh has been with the city for 25 years. So if each of you could come up and maybe and just light a plumb wall and go around and let the mayor and council shake your hands and tell you thank you. And I have a plaque to give you as well that acknowledges your service.
city. And, you know, I mean, it's true, this city cannot function without you. I mean, we might be able to sit up here and kind of ask, but you guys are the doers, and we appreciate that so much, day in and day out. So anyway, let's, we good to move on now? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move our meeting along then because I do know that there's other items here, but we appreciate the family and the support from all the other departments here to acknowledge their fellow staff members. So as they depart, I just want to let you know that we'll move on to citizens' comment portion of our meeting. And just so you know, the citizens' comment portion is for you to address the governing body on anything that you wish, that you feel like you need to bring before us. If you are here to speak on the public hearing portion, you can wait until then and share your comments at that time. Typically, on the citizens' comment portion, we usually limit it to like three minutes, but at the same time, you know, I don't like to kind of hit the buzzer. So just be respectful of that on your own, as well as the fact that this isn't a time when we get into a dialogue at all. So I don't want to have you think that the council or myself is going to really respond. We'll take all the notes, and we'll actually work with the staff and be able to get back with you on that. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to you for any type of comments you wish to address.
Good evening. And I don't want to come up here and spoil the spirit of the good citizens that made this effort on fighting that fire and the citizens.
Oh, excuse me. I forgot to mention, and this is on me.
Yes, my name.
A name, yeah.
Ryan Andreson. A lot of people know who I am. I'm the light guy, and I think we're going to talk about that a little bit, but moreover, it's about being a good neighbor. So I appreciate you guys, your counsel, Mr. Jensen. But I'm here tonight because I believe that how a city treats its citizens, especially in this small day-to-day, matters. It says everything about the values and how much we can trust our government. One of the simplest ways a city can build that trust is to act like a good neighbor. And I want to talk about ordinance 196100. Councilmember Edmondson had been having discussions about that. The title of that is prohibition of undesirable emissions. And it's really about the intent and the spirit. As an attorney, that is what matters, is the spirit and the intent. And I'm going to start off with the title. The first paragraph of it says, "Every use shall be so operated that it does not emit an excessive or dangerous degree of glare," which I'm particularly concerned about, "beyond any lot on which the use is located." So that's not written just for commercial property. It's a universal standard, one that tells the city's own operations, "This should not create a glare onto someone's home." It then later comes into this next section that's discussed in exterior lighting ordinance. And I'm going to quote it again. "Shielding of light fixtures shall be provided such that the light source shall be not visible at a height of five feet above the ground level at any residential property line as a protection of the resident." That five-foot rule exists for a reason, because the glare and light trespass directly affects the quality of life in a home, as you know, as I come here. That's the only reason why I come here. It's my home. It's a measurement. It's there to protect the sanctity of the residential property, especially when we're trying to get sleep at night. In my case, the street light in question shines directly into two of my bedroom windows and is visible from my porch. While the fixture is pointing downward, there's a diffuser that redirects the light horizontally exactly what the shielding requirement is meant to prevent. If this were any other property owner, a business, like we were arguing, there's some ambiguity in that section, or even one of my neighbors, they would be expected to shield that light. The previous city council clearly recognized that the light trespass on the residential property is really a problem. They built that and recognized the ordinance with a specific measurement, a height of five feet from the ground at a residential property line. They meant to protect the resident. That's the important person that's in this community. The only question is now is whether the city believes that it should be included in a good neighbor standard, or if it sees itself as exempt. So I've been cc-ing the mayor and the other city councils, not on this correspondence, not to embarrass anybody, but because I want to encourage a culture that where the city consistently respects the rights of residents, even when there's a difference of opinion. That's how trust is built in government. I'm asking you not just to follow the code, but to follow the spirit and the intent that that previous council had when they sat here in this chamber and talked about how important it was to protect the resident. To take the same steps yourself, and I'm going to, I'm sorry, I'm going to pick on Councilmember Edmondson. We talked about this. And I asked her, if you had a neighbor that came to you and said, "Your light is keeping me up at night," would you shield it? Because of the city that won't do that, why should a resident believe that it'll be fair with anything? So Mr. Jensen, I want to ask you one question. Why do you want to shine a light in my bedroom window when shielding would solve the problem at very little cost and no threat to public safety? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Once again, please make sure you state your name.
I'm Michael Christensen. I do my best to try and not use the three minutes, but today I just might. I walked into this meeting today thinking I was probably going to talk about the motorized vehicle discussion that happened prior, or maybe President Adams' comments on housing, but something far more important came up. I live out in West Leighton. About a year ago, we buried a child who was slaughtered on Shilim's Way. Few years prior to that, in 2021, we had another seven-year-old child on 1700 North who was nearly slaughtered by a vehicle coming through. And just in January of this year, we buried a crossing guard on 1600 North and Main Street. We have a problem. I'm a safety engineer for the Air Force. I don't know a whole lot about a lot of things, but I study safety. And so when you have a safety problem, you ask yourself why it happened. Then you ask yourself why that thing happened, why that thing happened. You go at least five layers deep on why things happen. Okay, well, these people were killed because drivers were speeding. Drivers were speeding because it's easy to speed on a very wide roadway. So why are the roadways so wide? Why is Shilim's Way 59 feet wide? Why 1600 North 59 feet wide? Make it so easy. It was talked about scooters going too fast. I'm not worried about the scooters. They weigh 100 pounds. Why? Why, why? Well, the reason is that you have a city ordinance that insists that a 40-foot-long fire truck has to be able to make a two-point turn on a public street. That's why. And I heard in the meeting back there that we want to buy another eight-foot-wide, 40-plus-foot-long fire truck to put on Leighton streets, whose streets are dangerous and deadly only because they need to accommodate a giant fire truck. And these regulations that are driven by some of our fire code are the reason for so much destruction of life. And who responds to the dead people on the road? The fire department. It's a system of perverse incentives, creating your own hazards so you can solve them by buying bigger trucks to create more hazards. And they want to buy this truck, one of the reasons they stated in the back room there is so they can have a 107-foot ladder so they can lift a fire hose up and spray it out over a building. Well, you're searching to solve that problem only for buildings that already have sprinkler systems in them where water has been going since 10 minutes before the fire truck gets there. It's a problem that doesn't exist practically. And again, I'm a safety engineer. I'm working on programs that thousands of people could die if something I work on goes wrong. I understand consequences, and I understand likelihood. But we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist by feeding a firefighter's industrial complex to have a truck that's bigger and longer and faster. And that's not the way to do business in a safe environment. Find a truck with a 70-foot ladder that you don't need all this other stuff for. It's big enough to get people out of any building in this city, and you don't need to spray water on top of a building that's got fire sprinklers in it already.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Jennifer Shepherd. Leighton City, Leighton is a city of approximately 87,000 residents, 30% and growing, of which do not live in single-family detached homes, meaning having no yards. 40% of residents own at least one dog, and yet there is not one park in the city for 35,000 of its residents to take their dogs to exercise and socialize off-leash, nor are there any plans for one in the future, even as housing density increases. Canon companionship has been shown to have substantial mental health benefits, physical health and social benefits as well, and yet Leighton has not been supportive or forward-thinking enough to facilitate these benefits by providing an off-leash space to gather, form friendships, bond, and exercise with other dog owners. This is despite continuous, at least a dozen-plus years, of resident demand and supposed support by various city leaders. Seeing this deficiency, I began inquiries about and advocacy for a dog park more than a year ago. Myself and others were repeatedly told by the Parks Planner and Director that it just isn't a priority. Finally, a dog park study was requested of the Parks and Recreation Department and given at a recent June work meeting to the city council, for which I was present virtually to the live stream. I was surprised and dismayed that both the planner and director's opinion was that the status quo, meaning no dog park, was sufficient for Leighton's needs, and that they recommended that Leighton dog owners just use neighboring cities' dog parks, while at the same time citing their overuse as a reason not to install one of Leighton's own. When asked about citizen interest, they dismissed it as being small, despite one to four residents attending and giving public comment at every commission meeting for a year, and that half of all website requests have been for a dog park, more than any other Of the two reluctantly proposed off-leash areas in that presentation, the Bamberger Trail is not viable at all due to its very narrow shape, noise level next to I-15, unsafe borders, condition of disrepair, and other unsurmountable obstacles. I'm surprised and dismayed it was even suggested due to the mantra of "We do it right or not at all." The other area, which was the David Weekly Homes at Eastridge Park Corridor, would be great, but it has been portrayed to residents by Dave Price and Joel and Grundy emphatically as an on-leash-only park. Yet it is now being presented to you as a potential off-leash area. Which is it? They are misrepresenting to either residents or you. That's kind of shady. And other sites, which with equal or greater potential, were completely omitted from the presentation altogether. So after a year of working with them, I am saddened to learn of their anti-dog park position, their dishonest representation of resident interest, and dog park site viability. And I've lost my confidence in the Parks and Recreation Department in advocating for the needs of Leighton resident dog owner and ramp tax-paying residents. So I'm imploring you, Mayor Petro and council members, to listen to the resident need and increase the priority for a safe gathering place for Leighton dog owners, and also to exercise caution in relying on less-than-accurate information being presented to you by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll go ahead and move our meeting along then, and we'll move down to our consent item. Tonight, we only have one item that will be presented, and that's on the final plat for Eastridge PRUD, and I believe Weston Appaloni is going to present that for us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Before you tonight is a preliminary, excuse me, the final plat for Phase 5D and 5E of Eastridge Park PRUD. These are the last two phases of this subdivision. The applicant, Adams Property LLC, is requesting the final plat approval on the, just highlight the areas here of the phases that we're looking at, the areas that you can see on the lots on the screen are what's being built out, and the two areas in red are what's being proposed for final plat today. On July 8th, the planning commission unanimously recommended the council grant the final plat approval for the Eastridge Park PRUD Phase 5E. On May 7th, 2015, is where the first approvals came. The city council unanimously approved the preliminary plat for Eastridge Park. Subsequently, the development has been going through multiple final plat phases, and again, this is the last two. Phase 5D is a 3.2-acre phase and is located on the north of Phase 5B and 5C. The phase contains 10 single-family lots fronting a public street, and the lot sizes range from 6,800 square feet to 20,300 square feet. Phase 5E is 4.98 acres and can, and it has a 20-foot-wide Kays Creek, there's the two easements, there's the 5D, and then there we go, there's the 5E. This includes the 20-foot-wide Kays Creek Trail easement, which is located west of the rear portion of lots 551 and 553, and require these lots to be identified as restricted lots on the plat. The phase consists of 11 lots fronting on the public street. The city is requiring that the plat include easements where retaining walls are and require assist in slope stability. The easements will protect the required retaining walls from being removed, changed, shifted by builders or by homeowners. As a part of this development, and going through the final plat approval, there was a number- a number of components that staff had to address. The average slope on the development is 14% or less, which is allowed within the PRUD zoning ordinance. Significant work went through, was completed on the geotechnical report, and the applicant has contracted with a consultant, I G E S, to be on the site to study all daily compaction reports and vibration monitoring. These reports are submitted to the city. Once the street and utility improvements of the development begin to be installed, the geotechnical engineer will require to submit a letter stating that all the improvements have been installed as required. And restricted covenants, the developer has submitted master covenants and subcovenants with previous phases for the PRUD. Supplementary covenants are to be submitted with the, with and reviewed for each of these phases. Again, as stated on July 8th, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval that the City Council approve Eastridge Park PRUD Phase 5D and 5E, subject to meeting all the requirements outlined in the staff report. Planning staff, or, planning staff recommends, pardon me, planning staff is in support of the Planning Commission's recommendation. Any questions?
Any questions, Council?
I have one. Just a question on the city's requiring the plat to include easements where retaining walls are required, and that they'll protect from future removal or, and even change or shifting by not just the builders, but by future homeowners. Do we have a lot, do we have situations where we've had that happen in the past? And what's the, maybe the enforcement mechanism, and how do we go about doing that?
Yeah, and that's actually, thank you for the question. That's actually a good reason why this is going on the plats now, because there has not been a lot of great mechanisms to identify when that has occurred. And so this is a step moving forward to identify, these are critical components of the subdivision, and we need to make sure that they're protected.
So like during the landscaping, they can't be like, "Well, I'd like to really move this, this piece of the retaining wall because I want to be able to put something there." That's not an available option in the future.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one. So this was approved originally back in 2015, when the rest of those subdivisions were put into place. With regard to the geotech and, you know, all of the issues that took place with that development, does staff fill, like can you fill in, maybe for the benefit of the public, kind of how the project went and the mitigation measures that were put in place, which is what allows you to come to us today? I mean, because it's been 10 years at this point, so I know a lot has happened, but can you just fill in a little bit of that?
Yeah, during, when this came before the Planning Commission and City Council in 2015, it was, you know, frequently commented that it was probably the most examined piece of property in the state of Utah, geologically. There was significant work that was done to make sure that, that the development was being done to meet all the standards that were allowed and possible to be met to keep the neighborhood safe and subdivision safe. Significant back and forth between the developer and a third-party geotechnical firm, which we use, which was, which was Goldr, Geotechnical, to make sure that what was being done was meeting code. And what is in front of you today is them making sure that they're, again, going back to compliance with all those standards. So yes, significant work was done. They're not changing anything from their original approval. They're just going through their phasing process and finalizing their subdivision.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Weston. If not, Council, I'll bring it back to you for action on item number A of our consent. Thank you, Tyson.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the item, consent item number A, final plats for Eastridge Park PRUD Phases D and E.
Is there a second?
Sorry, 5D and 5E.
Yes. Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve the final plat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to our public hearing portion of our meeting, and once again, Weston's going to present this item to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, before you tonight is a text amendment prepared by staff. The amendment would codify, codify the orientation of a single-family and two-family homes, as well as the location of the front doors on those homes. The purpose of this amendment is to require that the front facade and front doors of the homes are oriented towards the front property line and not towards the side or rear lot lines of the property. As we discussed in work meeting, we had a couple examples where this has come into play. This often comes in with infill developments where you may have a home that would, and you can see that red marker on the screen, where we would have a driveway, no pathway leading to the door, and then the front door pushed to the side of the house. And the ordinance today would technically allow that. Another example is here, where you can see that small red marker there. That is a front door, basically pointing to the back of the house, and provides access into the garage. Again, this, this creates a, an issue where we're entering into the home through the garage and not into, into living area. So what the draft, or what this ordinance does is it defines the front facade and specifically clarifies where that front facade is, that there has to be a front door along that front facade. That front, the front door needs to enter into habitable space and not into a garage door, garage space. And then it also requires a pathway to the nearest public or private street based on how it's developed, allowing the driveways to function as part of that driveway as well. As we talked about in work session, this is not something that is a frequent issue. However, when these issues do come up, they can cause consternation in the neighborhood and create development patterns that are inconsistent with the surrounding developments as well. And providing access and visible access to where the front door is can be a vital safety component of, of homes. On July 8th, 2025, the Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation of denial to the City Council for the proposed amendment, Title 19, Chapter 1902, and Chapter 1913. The Planning Commission determined that the text amendment was not necessary because the major developers had already complied, typically already complied with the proposed regulations, but it would create an unreasonable burden or, on independent and small-scale home builders. Staff does recommend the City Council approve the proposed ordinance as drafted. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Council, do you have any additional questions?
Thanks, Weston. If this were in, if this, if this was not approved, and say a subdivision has an open lot 20 years after it was developed, when that, when that goes through the process to be built on, would a final plot, plot map go to the Planning Commission for that that would show the orientation of the, of the house on the plot?
So just for clarification, just the, the building permit of it, or you're saying going through the subdivision process?
Going through the subdivision when they're, before they're able to break ground. Would something go to the Planning Commission that would show the orientation of the house?
No, I mean, if we were going through a preliminary plat, they may provide it as a, as an option to say, "This is what we're doing," but it wouldn't be required, and we, they wouldn't be able to make a determination based on the orientation of the home.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? There's no questions, then I'd look for a motion to open up our public hearing at this time.
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we now have a public hearing regarding this particular item. If anyone wishes to speak to that, you're more than welcome to. Please step up to the mic and state your name.
I see none of you are surprised. Michael Christensen. I was surprised when I went to the City Planning Commission meeting on this very topic three weeks ago. I thought I'd have to get up here and lecture them about the nanny state, but no, they were already seven against one, seven, six to one, I think, when I got up here. And this is one case where seven reasonable people did agree, and they got it right. Our nation is founded on the premise of securing the rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Not on that list is the freedom to not look at something you don't like. It's not there. Okay? If you look at the original briefing that went to the Planning Commission, there's only two words the city staff could come up with to describe why this is needed: consistency and character. If consistency and character are the only two words you can come up with to describe your policy position, you've lost the plot. Okay? In the, in the work meeting back here, I know you all think I'm anti-fire because of the address I gave 15 minutes ago, I think the world of our firefighters. I think enough of our firefighters that I want them to sit in the fire office, in the fire hall, and never leave because there's nothing for them to do. And yet, the hazard was brought up that a firefighter, a city's finest, reporting to a duty call at a single-family house, might accidentally go to the side door instead of the back door, and that's going to cost someone their life. I have a lot more respect for our firefighters than think it matters whether they have to walk an extra 10 feet inside the building to get to the living room where the man is laying on the floor, instead of walking straight in the front door. We have smart people, and they do good work, especially that lays on the 20th of June. I see no reason to dispute the findings of the Planning Commission on this issue. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic? If not, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the Council. Council, I'd appreciate the fact that if you would close the public hearing and then take action regarding our ordinance 25-19. Okay, in the meantime, the public hearing is still open. Anyway, Alex, you look like you're interested in saying something. Okay, Council. That's why you're elected, make hard decisions.
I think the, well, I mean, I'm having a coughing attack, so don't mind me, it's allergies. But I think maybe there's pause just to understand, you know, the need, the need for it, which we did ask in the work meeting, right? Like, is there a need for such a change? I know I asked how many homes are currently in this state, in this status, you know, is there, are there going to be adverse effects to us moving forward on this? And so I think that may, that can be a pause for me, not necessarily that I think that it's a, you know, something that doesn't need to be done or something that does need to be done, but just if we need to, you know, why, why would we necessarily need to move forward on something that's not causing concern? But if I remember correctly, Weston mentioned in the back that while we don't have a lot of this happening presently, that in the future, there is some expectation that these types of situations could cause problems. And so, I don't know, maybe Weston, you can speak a little bit more to the, the precedence, or not even precedence, but the prioritization of something like this, and why you think as a planning department that these situations would happen more frequently, and why this would be good to have in, in effect before those, those situations are presented.
Yes, thank you. I guess the first thing that I would say is that we are obviously built out in a lot of our areas. We're going to start seeing a lot more infill growth that occurs. That infill growth turns homes, and, and they try to get it in creative ways, which is good, and we want to facilitate that, and this ordinance addresses the, the ability to, to accommodate that. But we also recognize that we live in communities. We have setbacks for reasons. We have spacing, we have height requirements. There's a lot of different standards that we have within our communities that establish general neighborhoods in how we expect them to show up. Now, that doesn't mean you can't have the style of home you want. There's a lot of creativity that can go into this. This is something that most home builders are doing. However, what it does do is it removes the ability to build a home that looks just like a garage that you can't tell is a home, right? You don't, you don't know how to get to it. And there are, there are issues that can come up with that. We do have one that recently came up and, and, which is one of the examples that I provided, and it did cause a lot of frustration with the residents that were around it, because the homeowner didn't really want to work with them, and they, they wanted their door next to the side yard of, of the homeowner. And so, as we look and, and experience more infill development, we will see more options and, and more opportunities of this. One of the things that we talked about in work session was that there can be situations where someone could orient, orient their home in such a way that their rear yard is on display. And so what we're doing is we're trying to establish the general standard that we're already following, except for that one-off every now and then. And we're trying to prevent that one-off from causing major issues within the neighborhood.
Do you have anything further? I get, why wasn't it codified before?
Yeah, it's a good question. The majority of these cases that we've seen usually come up with, again, what we talked about in work session where it was an older home, and we're, we're dealing with that. Now, we're starting to see more that are infill developments and people positioning homes the way they want.
Yeah. Because I, I guess it would come as a surprise to me that you could orient the house the way that you guys have described it. Like, that doesn't seem like that would be something you'd be able to do.
Yeah.
Is that typically only the case in an infill situation? Not necessarily in a full-on, full subdivision? Or is that something within the code, because we don't have this codified, that would be allowed if an entire subdivision wanted to go through with that type of, you know, bizarre hypothetical?
That's right.
They could?
Yep.
Okay.
Again, it's, it's really a standard that, and a practice that's, that's being actively
Are there setbacks, differences? Is that why someone might put their, front of their house in the back?
I think more that what we see is someone on a corner lot that would say, "I want to increase my side yard. So what I'm going to do is, is I'm going to pick which side of that corner is going to be my front setback." And so in, in this, in the case that we talked about in work session, a gentleman faced his front door and his garage, the, basically the front of his house, and he said, "That'll be my side yard, and then my side yard will be my front yard, and I'll meet that setback." So the difference was, he did a 30-foot setback from the street on his side yard and a 20-foot setback on his front setback. And so it allowed him to have his home much closer to the street than the rest of the homes, and give himself a bigger side yard. And, you know, that's nice to have that accommodation, but then it comes into issues of where we allow accessory structures and pools, and those are typically in the rear yard. And the rear yard is opposite of the front yard. And so if your rear yard is really the side of your house, and you just made the side of your house, which is much smaller, it limits your ability to actually use the property. Hopefully, I'm, I'm being clear on that. Hopefully, that makes sense. You're looking at me, maybe, maybe not, but I can't, I can't tell.
No, I'm just thinking about how you said it, and I'm thinking what it would take, a side yard, front yard.
Sure.
A, a, a norm, I shouldn't say normal either, but one that is consistent with being front, side, and back, and how that would change. So, you're telling me if they declared a backyard, then if I put in a shed, it's got to go in the backyard, which is facing the street?
It'll just change your setbacks. So your, if your setbacks are in your side yard, then you, then you have to deal with bigger setbacks.
Bigger, right. Okay.
And it could limit what you want to do.
Which is interesting, because in today's environment, knowing that knowing that housing is obviously a premium and folks have an opportunity to have an ADU, this really limits them from any possibilities of having that. Or perhaps, taking it the devil's advocate angle, perhaps they're wanting that garage to be an ADU, but yet not identify it.
You know, and that's a really good call-out on the ADUs. As a part of that regulation, we regulate where the front door goes.
Yeah. Okay. Did you have a question?
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. I'm still confused. So, in your example of someone coming in now wanting a pool, and they've... the house has been built, the setbacks are how they are, but when the house was built, the front... you're telling us that the front door now decides the front setback?
Let me give you an example off of the...
But just, that was my question, one question. So, then, if somebody has... At the same time, they come back and say, "Now, I want to..." To your point of making the side yard or the backyard the side yard, and they want now to do, they want to put a shed in or a pool, and they come in and say, "All right, here's what I want to do." And you look at that lot, and you're like, "Well, okay, it's going to go right here because that's where the... that's the backyard." And they say, "No, it's not my backyard." Well, clearly, it is because of the setbacks. And they say, "No, my front door is on this side, so this is my front." That's... that can't be decided by, like, "No, that's not." I mean, at the staff level, without an ordinance, without... It just seems like that's common sense, and...
Which is one of the reasons why we want to establish this. So, oftentimes, what we go back to is the site plan. And we say, "How was it approved?" So, in the example of this graphic, this is the front yard. Let's just assume that this is the garage, and then this is the front door area, right? On this street, someone may say, "Well, if my front yard has to be 30 feet back, I don't want to do that. But I don't mind having a 30-foot side yard. So, and my side yard setback is 20 feet. So, I'll just switch them." The ordinance allows that.
When do they switch it?
So... No, as a part of the site plan, they would submit the site plan, and they would just say, "This is front, this is side." And the code allows that. And so, we would approve that. What this ordinance is saying is that we'd specifically call it out and say, "This is your front facade, and you need to have a front door on your front facade that faces the public right of way." Now, if you want to have a front door here and turn your home, then you can call this street your front facade. That's okay. But we need to have that front door facing a front facade. That way, we can say, "This is your front yard, this is your rear yard, this is your side yard, this is your side yard."
But that's only on a corner lot. Because you could run into this with any other lots as well that are not corners.
Yep. And we've had a number of issues with interior lots as well, yes.
Okay.
And then, the interior lots would be the ones that would have more of a problem for the neighbors?
That's correct.
Because then you'd be like, "Wow, my side yard is staring at this guy's... This guy's house is directly in front of my house instead of all the other doors on the entire subdivision are all facing in the same direction." Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I have another question.
Absolutely.
So, Mayor Petro, you brought up ADUs. And did you mention that passing this would negatively affect people's abilities to do the ADU? Or not passing this would be... would prevent it?
What I'm saying is it's going to confuse the matter even more, right? Because typically, an ADU could, is an accessory dwelling.
Right.
And if there's room, they could position it. But then, how do they access it, right? Or, like I said, the flip side of it is you'd want to do that so that you had that whole front area for a unit that you're not even going to declare.
So, would this, passing this ordinance, help to clarify where an ADU could be placed because of the space? Because it's based on how much space that you have on a lot?
One of the things that it would do is clarify the setbacks, yes.
Yeah, interesting, huh? Okay. Any other questions? Do you need more time? Remember, we've got one more item to go back into, to discuss.
Oh, yeah, sure. I am going... no, I'm not. I'm just going to apologize, but nah, why should I? I don't get it, okay? I mean, it's presented, I read it, I try to figure... I don't get it. So, I'm like saying I need some more information.
Sure.
And not, probably not more information, but more clarification of the information you've given me, or us, I should say. And I don't feel comfortable about passing it because I'm not exactly sure what it is, you know? And the ramifications go this way, that way, what-ifs. And so, I'd just like to set it back. I don't want to get rid of it. I just want to set it back. So, I... and I don't know how I can understand it better, except for you teaching me or somebody. But that's, you know, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just saying I don't get it. So, I'm sorry if I'm the only one, but, you know, it wouldn't be the first time in my life. So, I make a motion that we table it until we can meet and somebody teaches. Another work meeting, I guess, would be the next place. And I know you did a good job in there, but I still...
You're fine, we're happy to bring back...
I just don't get it.
We're happy to bring back more detailed information.
Yeah, just bring back more detail and remember who you're talking to. You know, that'll help, so...
So, can I make a comment?
Sure.
And maybe you can correct me, Weston?
Actually, I have a motion that I have to entertain first. Sorry, I just...
No.
Unless you're willing to withdraw your motion for a moment?
I'll withdraw it for a minute, go ahead.
If he withdraws the motion, then absolutely, you may speak.
It's okay.
Okay.
I was just going to insert, obviously, I don't vote on this, but I think what the challenge is, if you try to simplify it, at least in my mind, is should an individual homeowner, despite what the standards are in the city, should an individual homeowner be able to decide on their own, outside of the city approval, what is the front yard, the backyard, and the side yards? And historically, the front of the house that faces the street is considered the front yard. So, I think what we're saying is, does the city have an interest, for a host of reasons, to be able to say, "Your front yard needs to face the street," as opposed to me deciding, for whatever reason, maybe logical, maybe very illogical, that I can build a home in a... that's been developed in an orderly, consistent fashion for, again, a whole host of reasons, that I can decide, "I don't agree with that standard, and so, I'm going to make what is usually my front yard my backyard, and I'm going to flip the house. I'm going to turn it this way, I'm going to turn it that way." That... it's not about trying to not say somebody can't build a house, but the city has an ability, an interest, I think, in regulating communities in an orderly fashion and allows there to be some consistency and stability and predictability, not only into the future, but also in the past. If you come into a subdivision that has been developed according to those orderly standards, then I can come in and completely disrupt that and turn it on its head for whatever... there's not be any justification. There's not a hardship that has to be met. It's just, "I simply want to do something different." Now, that works. But we were talking earlier, the gentleman, Mr. Andreessen, comes and talks about light. The streetlights are impacting his peace and serenity at his home. And that's a public unit, you know, that, a public service that provides for public safety and whole host of other things. There is an expectation, I think there should be, that what, with people who follow the orderly development that's been established by the elected officials, there shouldn't be too much latitude. There should be some, but should be only reasonable latitude to be able to come in and completely disrupt that or tip all of that on its head. And that's what we're finding. Again, it doesn't happen very often, but when it does, it creates significant issues. So, I think that's really the simple thing is, is if the city has standards, now we're saying in this case, between what the state is doing in terms of allowing what can be considered a dwelling unit and not having the ability to place those in a place that causes... recognize that you have to convey it because the state legislature said so, but they're placed in a fashion consistent, even though their structural aesthetics and their structural design is much different than traditional single-family houses. There is some consistency in the orderly development of the area. I said that very well, but I think that's what it really gets to, as opposed to everybody saying, "I want this, I want this," and you end up with complete inconsistency through a subdivision, so... It was one of the many that we thought...
No, that's a good comment. Okay, the public hearing's still open. Mr. Christensen?
And you wonder why we have a housing crisis. Listen to yourselves. 10,000-foot lots, 20-foot setbacks on the side, 30-foot setbacks on the side. I'm glad my son brought his Dungeons and Dragons books so I could explain to you why this doesn't matter. What does it matter for the safety of the road if you're 30 feet this way and 20 feet this way versus 30 feet this way and 20 feet this way? The cars coming by on both roads have the same amount of viewing distance. There's no safety impact at all. And genuinely, the best you can come up with for writing a code is consistency and character. You've lost the plot, and you're the problem with housing costs in Leighton and everywhere else in the state.
Okay, thank you.
Put them in any state away.
Okay. Counsel?
Mayor, to Dave's point, I agree. But I can see both sides of this, but I'm just not there right now, potentially. I'm thinking additionally, there's, on a corner lot, I don't know if they can choose which, it would change the setbacks, but how they orientate their house, but that would change the way they're allowed to landscape or required to landscape, especially if the landscape requirements change in the future for conservation reasons. So, I would make a motion to close the public hearing and table this for now.
Do you have a date in mind?
I was going to ask if it'd be appropriate just to move on to the next item, and it would just be here, but I don't know.
Counsel, you want to guide me on that?
I'll split it to after we talk about the next item?
Well, I was just, table it. No, I wouldn't say a date, but just to give...
No date certain?
Do we need to? Do we need to have a date on something like this?
No, not...
I just don't see the... yeah. Where I don't see the timing is vital to do it now or at a certain date, but I would be open to hear more information in the future.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this. And the motion is to just table the item for now. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose? I was going to say with the table, I don't think we have to.
No, and to be clear, if this were an amendment that had been requested by a citizen or a developer, they would be entitled to a timeframe. This is not that. So, we can just bring it back on an agenda.
Okay.
Just, this is not intended... obviously, you've made your decision. This is just to hopefully help some things for you to digest as you think about this, and then we'll come back with more. But there are more than just consistency and character. There are more reasons than that. Some of those have been articulated, not all of them, but to Councilmember Thomas's point, the point of this text change is to orient front doors towards the front of the home, towards the street, to more predictable, more walkable, more consistent, whatever you want to call it. That's what it's trying to address. That, and that the front door needs to go to habitable space, that when you go in a front door, you actually go into the house, not a garage, not an unfinished portion of a home, something like that, which is one of Weston's examples. And then, this is not an exhaustive list, and we'll do a better dive into it for you to provide additional information. But just when this first came up, I just did a quick review of some cities. Again, wasn't... I didn't do a deep dive, but Ogden City has an ordinance that requires this. Provo City has an ordinance that requires this. Cedar City has an ordinance that requires this. I believe South Salt Lake City has an ordinance that requires this. So, just, when I looked at those, there are a number of cities that do have it. As I tried to tie those together, the only thing I could come up that were common amongst those cities, those are all larger, older cities that do have a lot of areas that are built out. And I wonder if they've encountered some similar issues where you start to have some interesting orientations and things that do cause some public safety concerns and some issues like that. We don't... we could look into the reasons why they may or may not have done that. But just some more information for you to think about before we bring it back, and we can provide more context to that after we've had a chance to do that.
That's good.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just, I wanted to vote, and my vote is aye, because I did a vote. But I also wanted to ask, just request from staff, that we have... I mean, I would prefer more than the work meeting prior to the council meeting to review an item and discuss it because I think a lot of times when we do end up in this type of a situation, it's because we haven't really had ample time to discuss and really understand the intent and what it is we're going to make a decision on. And we don't want to make a decision that's going to have adverse effects that we didn't think about, you know what I mean? So, we didn't have much time in the work meeting prior to this to even discuss this, even though it was on the agenda. And then, we're here to make a decision. And so, I would just request staff that maybe if there's something that you want to be voted on, if we could speak to that in a previous meeting, a meeting prior to when we have to vote on it, if it's something that's going to be a discussion point. Because, you know, I feel like that's, that makes it difficult to really make a good decision when we don't have ample time.
Okay, so let me ask a question then. Are you... because typically, I know, and we've tried to set time for an additional meeting, just, it could be whatever topic. It's been very difficult to kind of get everybody together to be able to have that. Are you saying that you would prefer a topic like this to be presented in a work meeting, not the same night that we're going to take action on it, but then also be able to bring it back to discuss? Or are you willing to go for a separate meeting? I think that's really what I need to know so I can kind of make sure we take care of the business.
Well, I think an item such as this, that is initiated internally, that doesn't have time constraints, doesn't have the time pressure that some other things might have. So, I do understand that there are things that are, you know, time-sensitive that would, maybe we'd have to run into something like this. But if that's the case, then I would prefer that the work meeting agenda provide ample time for that discussion. But like this, to me, doesn't fall in line with that because there's no time sensitivity with this. And this is something that was initiated by staff, not by a resident, not by a developer, or anybody who would have legal recourse to say, "You didn't give me the due diligence," you know what I mean? So, I just feel like there are some times that staff may think, "Oh, this is not going to be something that's going to take too much." But we don't know that. Obviously, we come in and we think we may get it, but then we don't. And so, it would just be beneficial, I think, to have more time.
Yeah, and tonight, we considered was a light agenda.
Exactly.
So, it's hard to predict. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I didn't vote either, so I'm voting no on the motion. Just for, I didn't get a chance before it kind of took off. Not necessarily, you know, not wanting to have more discussion. I don't actually think it's that complicated of a discussion. I don't think it requires additional discussion. I think it's pretty plain that we just want to have consistent standards, have the front door in the front of the house, and not have, you know, infill development potentially change the character of a neighborhood for people who have potentially been there for years, decades. And that's also a part of public...
years, decades, and that's also a part of public, our public duty here is to ensure that private property rights are not absolute, and that the people who already live there have the right to ensure that infill development is not being situated in a way that we cannot prevent the back door from being in the front of the house, so.
Okay, we good? You might be up. Thomas? We did. So motion to adjourn and reconvene in the.
Oh, that's why you're looking. Yeah, you're up. I make a motion, we adjourn, that's for sure. And reconvene someday later and.
No, in the work meeting for one other item.
Oh, we have to, I'm sorry, okay, that we reconvene in our closed-door meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. He just finished it. Matina's second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Yeah, you can.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We, I appreciate everyone being here tonight, thank you very much, thank you everyone online, and be safe out there.